Hello and good evening on behalf of residents, businesses, my colleagues on the City Council of West Hollywood, welcome to our beautiful city. We have my colleague Mayor Protem Erickson here and Councilwoman Lauren Meister. We also have former mayor and councilwoman Abby Land present. This evening, we have the privilege of hosting an amazing human being and advocate for our community who last November 2022 was elected to represent the 51st Assembly District of the California Legislature. And we're in the city of West Hollywood even more proud to have a member of the LGBTQ community elected to the Assembly to represent our city and the entire district. Rick Zabur, who is a friend to many of us, has been even before he was elected as a member of the Assembly, a warrior for true equality as he led Equality California, a major player in the state and legislature advancing LGBTQ plus equality. He was also a resident of West Hollywood as well. So we're very proud. As a matter of fact, his election to the Assembly is a natural continuation of his life dedicated to serving others. During this evening's forum, you will have the opportunity to get more information on the work Assembly Member Zabur is doing on our behalf, including authoring a bill like AB 1620, which would allow permanently disabled residents who live in a rent-controlled unit of a building where no elevator is available to request and be granted relocation to a similar size or smaller accessible unit while maintaining their rental terms. That means relocation without changes to the terms of the tenancy. This, which has been tried before, is now moving in the legislature and in no small part due to Assembly Member Zabur's efforts. And we really appreciate that after we passed the item at the City Council and contacted you, you just stepped right up and did it. And it's a testament to your leadership. You will also hear from our Assembly Member about his efforts to secure funding for a very special project for all of us, but I will let him break the news for you. Some of you may already know about this. Stay tuned. Friends, please join me in welcoming our Assembly Member Rick Chavez Zabur.
Yes, I think Councilmember Erickson and Meister were going to say something as well.
It's hard to top the mayor with all that amazing stuff that Rick has already done within how many, how, it's been what?
Six months.
Six, six months, to say the least, not, not to say the least, because he's working hard. But thank you for coming tonight. I just want to say a little bit about Rick as a person. Rick is one of the truest forms of allies in every way, shape, and form. When you need him, he's there. He puts in the work. Sometimes you can't get him off the phone, not a bad thing. But Rick is always there for everyone of our communities, from our business community, for our renters, and for everyone. And I just want to say on a special note of privilege, my work at Planned Parenthood, Rick is a board member for Planned Parenthood Los Angeles, and within a few days secured funding for the UCLA Center for Reproductive Health Law and Policy, which is setting policies for reproductive rights nationwide to train lawyers, potentially judges, to combat these systematic disruptions to how our healthcare system goes. And so as a, as the first pro-choice city, as a person who cares about this issue, thank you so much for doing that because people don't see that, but you do it. And you do it with such grace and passion. And so I'm just so thankful you're my Assembly Member. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Lauren Meister.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, Rick, we go back a long way. Rick lived in the neighborhood that I used to represent many, many years ago when I was president of a residents association. And we got to work together actually on something where typically we're at odds, we might have been at odds. And, and all I can say is, you know, Rick is a wonderful person to work with. And what makes me really happy that Rick is in Sacramento is the fact that he is an environmental lawyer. And there are so many competing interests, I'm sure, at the state level, just as there are at the local level and at the national level. So it's nice to have someone who has that background and is looking out for our environment at the same time that we have all these other things going on. So thank you so much.
Thank you to our City Council members and council, we would love for you to stay for the photo opportunity after the presentation. Welcome, everyone. My name is Todd Hallman, and I serve as Chair of the West Hollywood Public Safety Commission and head of the WeHo East Neighborhood Watch Group. But I'm here tonight as a 35-year resident of the city of West Hollywood, volunteering for an elected official that I respect and believe in. Thank you to everyone here tonight and everyone watching at home for being part of Assembly Member Zabur's first West Hollywood Community Town Hall. This event is part of Assembly Member Zabur's listening tour throughout his new district, which spans from Santa Monica Pier to Griffith Park and includes West Hollywood right in the middle of the district. We are so glad to have Rick here in our city tonight, and we are so lucky to have him representing us in Sacramento. Tonight's event is intended to connect residents with their Assembly Member to learn about his legislative priorities and what he's working on for us in Sacramento. I'll now welcome my friend and colleague from the Planning Commission, Eric Matos, to introduce Assembly Member Zabur.
Thank you, Todd. Good evening, West Hollywood. My name is Eric Matos. I serve on the West Hollywood Planning Commission. I'm excited to be here, and I have the honor of introducing Assembly Member Zabur, who is a wonderful person. I want to go on, there's a lot to be said about Rick Zabur, but I want to go into his background a little bit. In 2022, Assembly Member Zabur was elected to represent the 51st Assembly District in the California State Assembly. The district encompasses the cities of West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, and Los Angeles. However, his story didn't begin in the 51st District. Assembly Member Zabur grew up in a small rural farming community in New Mexico. When he wasn't studying or going to school, he was taking care of his elderly grandparents or working on the family farm. He was the first in his community to graduate from Yale College and Harvard Law. In 1985, Assembly Member Zabur moved to the city of Los Angeles, and he rose quickly to become one of the state's top environmental and government law attorneys. And he's dedicated his talents and his work ethic to making a meaningful change here in the state of California. We are so incredibly lucky to have him. He is putting his talents to good use, and he's proven to be a very effective Assembly Member. Within the first six months of being in the California State Assembly, he has introduced 11 bills, eight of which have passed a full vote of the California Legislature, of the State Assembly. The other two will go on for the second year in the legislative cycle. He also has joined the ranks of leadership in the California State Assembly, just recently becoming the California State Assembly Democratic Caucus Chair. And I know he's just getting started. So without further ado, I give you your Assembly Member. Please join me in welcoming Rick Chavez Zabur.
Thank you, Eric, for the warm introduction and Todd for moderating. And thank you both. And Callie, who will be helping in a bit. And I want to thank the city of West Hollywood, the City Council members, and the mayor who's here with us tonight, and everyone on the West Hollywood city staff who made tonight possible. Before we get into our discussion, I'd like to switch gears for just a minute and present a symbol of the state of California's support for members of our community who are in recovery. Everyone has a story to tell of their experience with addiction, whether it's their own or experience with a loved one. I certainly do, both with my family and friends. And the Log Cabin, which is just right around the corner, is an institution in West Hollywood, a resource and a beacon of hope for people in our community and people in the recovery community. Within just a couple months of assuming office, I got a call from Councilmember Erickson, and that was followed up by, by long meetings with the mayor and every member of the council and the city staff, really helping me understand the importance of obtaining more funding for the Log Cabin and really what that would mean, not only to the residents of West Hollywood, but really to the entire recovery community of the whole area here in, in, in and around West Hollywood. And so I'm pleased to announce that as a result of that, I put a priority request for funding, worked with Senator Allen, we both actually put funding requests in. And the way it worked this year is that we had funding that was available for the Assembly and funding on the Senate. We actually thought by putting requests in individually that we might actually be successful in getting one funding request through. But as it turned out, I put a funding request in for $650,000, and Senator Allen put a request in for $500,000. They came from two different entities, and we basically were together successful in securing funding for 1.15 million for the Log Cabin. So I, I want to thank Senator Allen. I want to thank the mayor and the members of the council and the incredible city staff. Hernando, you were incredible in helping us with that. And I do, I think we've got a check here that if we could get the members of the, of the, of the council and the mayor up, want to present something.
That's not going to fit my pocket.
So I'm not quite sure if you can put this through the ATM, but wanted to present you.
Christina Simons is a board member.
Yes, nice to see you again. So I want to present a check for at least for the $650,000 that came out of the Assembly allocation. And I'm sure that Senator Allen is going to be wanting to present the other part very soon. But congratulations, and I know you're going to put this to really good use. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
One, two, three, one more.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. So thank you. And I'd like to thank, it's, we've got a little bit of an intimate crowd, so hopefully we're going to have some time to really answer questions and, you know, have, you all have an ability to understand some of the work that I'm doing. You know, it's really an honor to be here tonight in this new role and that you've elected me to represent you in Sacramento. Like Todd and many of you, I remember West Hollywood before it was a city. For many years, I lived just around the corner from the 24 Hour Fitness and Starbucks off of Santa Monica Boulevard on Westbourne. I later lived for about eight years on Ashcroft right off of Robertson. And I today only live a few blocks outside of, outside of West Hollywood, just near La Brea and Melrose. So West, I consider West Hollywood my home. I think it's the heart of this new district, and it's clearly the place where, where my heart is. And, and I think really is a city that is providing such important leadership, not only for the LA area, but for the entire state of California. As, as, as Todd and Eric mentioned, my priorities have been to address climate change, addressing the crisis of homelessness and housing, and really fighting for civil rights. the crisis of homelessness and housing, and really fighting for civil rights and protect our civil liberties and our freedoms. I did author 11 bills this year. Only one was, has not made it through, has not been successful now. And one of the things that I never really realized is that we have a process where pretty much every bill goes to a committee called the Appropriations Committee. And one of the things that is true is that everyone loses at least one bill in appropriations, everyone. There were only seven of us who only lost one bill. Most members of the Assembly lost more than that. But so my other 10 bills are all alive. Two of them are going to be, we're working on, they're really pretty heavy lifts, so they're going to be, they're what we call two-year bills, meaning we have two years to work on them. And the other eight bills have made it out of the Assembly and are working their way through the state senate and hopefully onto the governor's desk. Let me just talk about a couple of the bills, and then, out in the front, you can pick up my entire bill package, which gives you a sense of what all the 11 bills are. One of the bills is one that is actually sponsored by the city of West Hollywood and Santa Monica, but I've got to tell you, Santa Monica, West Hollywood brought this bill to me. I remember when the members of your council and Hernan brought this bill earlier this year, and it's a bill, it's called AB 1620, and it's aimed at helping people with physical mobility disabilities and elderly people who are living in rent-controlled apartments that are on the second floor. It allows them to actually move to a first, an available first-floor unit if their apartment doesn't have an elevator. And I view this as actually one of the, one of a series of bills that I've introduced that are aimed at preventing homelessness. And so, we know that there are real-life people here in West Hollywood that are waiting for this bill to be passed. I've got to say, I never quite understood how difficult it would be to take on a bill that has anything to do with Costa-Hawkins, which is the rent control law in the state of California. That is a very, it's almost like the third rail where you have interests that are so entrenched on not changing that law that even something like this, which is so common sense, which is so compassionate, was something that was a difficult bill to get through. But I'm really proud to say that we worked very hard with the California Apartment Association, and really focused on the fact that we had landlord, that most landlords, our mom-and-pop landlords, that have two and three and four-unit buildings. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were going to be fair to them as well. So, we put a number of protections in for smaller landlords, and were able to get the California Apartment Association not to oppose the bill, but to actually be in a neutral position. So, having them in a neutral position, and the California Realtors are still opposed, but they're only mildly opposing it, and we're still trying to work out a couple details with them. So, I'm actually very optimistic about that bill getting through the senate and hopefully hitting the governor's desk. The other issues that I've been dealing with are related to housing and homelessness. I'm very, very, I have a lot of optimism for the leadership in our cities and towns, and the fact that the new mayor of Los Angeles, Mayor Karen Bass, is really focusing on homelessness in a way that I haven't sort of seen, you know, in a long time. And I think doing it in a way where she is reaching out to cities like West Hollywood and Santa Monica and the County Board of Supervisors, and really trying to put together a regional approach to addressing homelessness. I am part of the LA County delegation, which is over 30 members of the legislature that represent parts of Los Angeles, and we've met with the mayor several times now and really said, "Look, we are here to help you with your strategy as you put it together." That said, when I ran for office, I basically told folks that I would be laser-focused on what, doing what I could do to try to help solve this really heartbreaking crisis that we are facing and that is actually impacting so many of our neighborhoods and the people that are unhoused. And so, I had, in addition to the AB 1620, which is the bill I talked to you about now, I have another bill that is actually focused on helping foster youth. It basically is a bill that improves what's called the Independent Living Program, which helps foster youth obtain housing, obtain, apply for jobs, get into community college. It really provides independent support. It's meant to try to help foster youth substitute for the support that they would get in their young adulthood from their parents or families that they don't, that many of them don't often have. So, many of you may not be aware of the fact that, but 25% of former foster youth become unhoused at some point after they become 18 years old. And so, that is a population, I know that Eric is someone who, when I was running, was very focused on raising that set of issues for me, and it's something that I focused on, and we've been working with a number of the groups that are focused on foster youth on that bill in particular. And that bill is moving forward, and I think is going to, what it does is it expands the Independent Living Program from the age of 21 to 23. It changes the qualifying criterion for the program so that more foster youth can access it. I mean, one of the things that's a problem with the current program is if a former foster youth has $5,000 in savings, they become ineligible for the program. Well, we want these young adults to have $5,000 in savings. We want them to have enough money and save so that they actually have a cushion and a nest egg that they can rely on, and that is one of the things that will help them overcome housing insecurity. So, we're basically removing that and allows them to stay a part of that program and part of that sort of social and the safety net program. My signature bill is called the California Housing Security Act, and that is one of my two-year bills. And really, I guess one of the things that I sort of neglected to say is, as we're sort of working with the mayor and the Board of Supervisors and some of our lower, our local cities on sort of a regional approach to homelessness, what I thought I could do as a first-year legislator is really look at a number of slices of things that could sort of help improve, improve the circumstances of people that face high housing insecurity. There are about 10,000 people in the state of California every year who become newly unhoused, and we're basically losing the battle in homelessness. We just had a recent homeless count, and what it showed is that more people became unhoused than we actually were able to intervene and basically provide either temporary or permanent housing on the other end. So, I think that part of the solution is really doing everything we can to prevent homelessness. So, the Housing Security Act is one that actually creates a system of short and medium-term rent subsidies focused and targeted to the people that are most, that face the highest risk of housing insecurity. So, people like former foster youth, people that are unemployed, people that have been incarcerated, people that have been homeless or are homeless, or unhoused, veterans, folks that are low-income, seniors, people living with disabilities. And so, it would provide rent subsidies for up to $2,000 a month for up to two years if that program could prevent people from becoming unhoused during this period of time. For those 10,000 people statewide, it would cost the state about half a billion dollars to fund that program. If those 10,000 people become unhoused, and we have to intervene on the other end and either build temporary supportive housing or permanent housing, the cost at the other end is something, is estimated to be between $6 and $10 billion. So, not only is a program like this one that is more, I believe is more compassionate by actually not having people lose their home and encounter really the PTSD that people encounter when they are facing those circumstances, but I think it's, but it's also more cost-effective for the taxpayers of the state of California. I'm really proud that the County Board of Supervisors has signed on as a sponsor of the bill. I want to thank former council member, now supervisor, Lindsay Horvath, who has been one of the people, her, Lindsay, Supervisor Horvath and Supervisor Solis have been the two members of the Board of Supervisors that have really been spearheading, getting the county behind it. We're hopeful that the mayor will embrace it. We're in a point now where we really have to build support for this so that we can actually find the funds and the budgets to fund this next year and get this bill through. So, that gives you a little bit about housing and homelessness. The other issues on climate change, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on climate change now, except to tell you that I have a big bill. It's the, it was AB 3 that is really focused on moving forward offshore wind development, which is one of the key things we need to do to get off of dirty fossil fuels and close Diablo Canyon. And so, it's a bill that is trying to do two things. It's trying to make sure that as we move to offshore wind, that we're able to do it, and we take the steps in planning so that it becomes a reality, and that we do that in a way that protects our environment, protects our cultural resources. And then on top of it, one of the key issues is that we actually bring the jobs that this emerging industry will create to the state of California. So, one part of the bill requires the California Energy Commission to evaluate what the pros and cons will be if we impose a 70% and an 85% in-state content requirement to make sure, and that would be a requirement that we actually not only assemble these offshore wind turbines here in the state of California, but we manufacture all the component parts. When I moved to Los Angeles in 1985, I remember really how healthy the aerospace industry was and the number and the kind of jobs that were provided, which, you know, was brought here during World War II. Offshore wind promises the same kind of jobs, and it's really, they're high-skilled, high-wage jobs, and this could be not only tens of thousands, but potentially hundreds of thousands of jobs a year for California. So, that's what that bill does. I've got another bill that requires local cities and towns to plan for the electrification that we need, both building decarbonization, as well as making sure that we actually have electric charging stations planned for in all parts of the city and for all communities. I mean, I drive an electric car, I have a charger that's, you know, right next to my parking space at my house, but we need to plan for the fact that a lot of people live in apartments with parking garages where it's hard to put chargers and expensive in every spot, and people don't have access to it. And we also have people that don't even actually have parking where they live, where they're actually parking on the street. And so, we've got to figure all that out, and it requires local jurisdictions to actually do that planning and put strategies in place so we actually have these chargers in place. The city of Santa Monica is one of the leaders in this and has already adopted a plan that's a model for this. And I know that your city leaders have been actually really focused on climate change and these very issues. So, I am really lucky that I represent two of the cities that are really at the forefront of this already, but we really need to sort of take that through, you know, to the rest of the state. And then the last thing I'm going to talk about is, before I open it up for questions, is really the, my focus on civil rights and social justice, and that is the last bucket that I've been focused on as one of your, as your legislator. The second bill I introduced this year is AB 5, which is the Safe and Supportive Schools Act. And that is basically, it's become very controversial, as you might have seen, where you're living in a time where conservative social forces are basically, have decided to use LGBTQ people and trans kids in particular as the focal point of their thirst to regain political power in the state. We've had demonstrations in Glendale that are really not Glendale residents, but looks like they're mostly Proud Boys from other parts of the state. We had the Chino Valley School District just adopted a policy a couple weeks ago that requires teachers to out students to their parents if they suspect they might be trans. And that is something, as you might imagine, it could be terribly, terribly harmful to some of these kids. And so, that is sort of the backdrop of what we're facing. My bill, AB 5, is basically the culmination of about eight years of work that we started when I was at Equality California, really to try to make sure that our schools are lifting up and providing opportunities for LGBTQ kids and the communities that we're a part of. A lot of people think, and what it would do is it would require that every teacher in, for grade seven through 12, and certificated school staff undertake an hour per year of LGBTQ cultural competency training, completing a curriculum that is about to be completed by the state Department of Public Instruction for teachers, a teacher curriculum. It basically will cover best practices on how to identify kids that are at risk, the ways of, you know, respecting LGBTQ kids, how you handle cases where you have conflict among parents or with other kids, how you handle bullying, how you provide resources to these kids that may be facing lack of acceptance at home. A lot of folks think of this as being an anti-bullying bill, and it is that, but I believe it's so much more. When you look at the statistics, just measures of community health and well-being, the LGBTQ community score is low on almost every measure of community health. So, school dropout rates, LGBTQ kids, four times the rate of dropping out of a non-LGBTQ kid. Homelessness, four out of 10 homeless youth are members of the LGBTQ community. That's someplace between four and eight times our percentage in the population. Poverty, high rates of poverty, high rates of engagement with the criminal justice system, high rates of substance use, high rates of suicide ideation, low rates of health insurance coverage, high rates of smoking, high rates of substance use. Really, on almost every measure of community health broadly defined, the LGBTQ community score is low, and if you're a member of our community who's also a member of a community of color, or you're an immigrant, or you're a person living with HIV, or even if you're a woman, you're at the very bottom of all those measures. So, I've always, so this bill is about really trying to break a cycle, which we anecdotally all know is happening, and that is that we've got kids that are actually facing bullying in their home, in their communities or school, or lack of acceptance in their home. And basically, what they're doing is they're dropping out of school, they end up, they may be turned out of their home by their parents, or they leave on their own because the atmosphere is hostile, they begin, they begin living on the streets, they turn to activities that result in their engagement with the criminal justice system to support themselves. It results in high rates of poverty and all these things. And so, if, I've always believed that one of the ways that we can intervene most effectively is by using our schools and making sure that teachers are equipped to understand these kids that are at risk and help them grapple with the circumstances they're in. And so, that's what AB 5 is all about. Very, it's probably the most controversial bill I've had. I've got, you know, the Washington Beacon about every six weeks writes an article about, which really mischaracterizes the bill. I mean, they, you know, basically say that the bill is about me wanting teachers to help kids, to help teachers get sex-change operations without their parents' consent. It has nothing to do with that, is not what the bill does. The law doesn't even allow what they claim we intend to do, but that's really sort of the backdrop. And of course, when, every time we have a hearing, we have 200, you know, MAGA folks show up at the hearings, and they tend to be pretty contentious. I've got two other bills that I'm also very proud of, and one is a bill that is really, I think, just embraces the California dream. We, as you all know, we have a really significant school-teacher shortage. And so, one of the things, so first of all, the AB 5, really, 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 really proud of the fact that not only Equality California, my former organization, is a sponsor, but the other two sponsors of that bill are the California Federation of Teachers and the California Teachers Association. Those two entities typically, you know, they get a lot of mandates imposed on teachers, but I'm really proud that teachers are asking for this, and they've been strong allies in the, in the fight for LGBTQ equality. And I just want to thank CTA, California Teachers Association, and CFT for being such strong partners. The other bill I'm carrying for California Federation of Teachers and CTA is this bill I was just talking about, which is aimed at addressing the teacher shortage, but it's aimed at addressing the teacher shortage by providing new opportunities for people that are already dedicating their careers to helping our kids, but may have not had the ability at a time early in their life to become a teacher themselves. So, it basically is a program that pays for the tuition for people, for school staff, like school custodians, or school cooks, or bus drivers, to become teachers themselves. It will pay for their tuition, and then during the period of time that they actually have to do their student teaching, that 12-week period, it will actually pay their salary so that they can leave their job as a school cook and actually do their student teaching and support their family at the same time. So, that's another bill that I'm, that I'm working on now, and is working its way through the legislature. And then the last bill is one that is actually focused on a category of workers that are overlooked, and I think are unintentionally falling through the cracks, and it's temporary workers of local cities and counties. And it's temporary workers of local cities and counties. Many cities and counties, because of financial reasons, have turned more and more to hiring temporary workers when they're doing exactly the same thing that permanent workers are doing. And these temporary workers are outside a collective bargaining unit and therefore do not get the same pay or the same benefits that the same employee that's doing exactly the same thing that is sitting next to them at the desk next to them is getting paid. And so this bill basically allows temporary workers to join collective bargaining units and get the benefit of union pay and working conditions. And that's sponsored by SEIU and ASME, and that's another bill that's moving forward. And so that's my social justice package this year. I've got some other bills. You can read about them in the, in the back. But it gives you a little bit of a sense of what I'm working on. We did, one other thing that I'll say is that I've been very focused on, you know, I view myself as a strong progressive. And, I'm not going to say but, I'm going to say and. And I'm someone who really believes that we have to have a pro-business and a pro-jobs environment and Democrats need to stand up for that. And so I've spent a lot of time this year really making sure that the legislature extended the film tax credit, which is such a strong part of keeping entertainment jobs here in the Los Angeles region and area. One of the things that people don't really, I think, maybe appreciate is that New York and Georgia and Canada and even little New Mexico are looking to eat our lunch and draw our signature industry from Los Angeles into these other states. New York just adopted an $800 million tax credit. Georgia has one that's unlimited. New Mexico's tax credit is $160 million a year. The tax credit that we just approved is only 330 and we have to fight really hard to get that through. And that is basically keeping high wage jobs, both what they call above the line, which is sort of the management jobs, but also below the line, the people that are sort of union members that are, you know, skilled work. It's really good, high-paying work, but one that if we, if these jobs don't go here, don't come here, those people all lose their jobs. So worked very hard with that. That is a bill that a lot of people say, okay, is this a corporate giveaway? I don't think so because every dollar we spend on the tax credit results in $7 of taxes coming back to the state of California and our local entities. So this tax credit more than pays for itself and I think is a really important part of keeping really our signature industry here and making sure that even though we have this labor strife now, that these, that, you know, that the industry can pay our writers and our actors and, you know, and crews well and that we keep the small businesses that support all these productions moving forward. So that's another thing that I've been working on. And I want to, want to thank some of my colleagues, Laura Friedman and Jesse Gabriel and some others for being strong supporters of that program. So with that, let me sort of stop and see if there's any questions. I think with Kelly, were you going to moderate that?
Yes, but before we move to the Q and A session, I would be remiss if I did not introduce Christina Simmons, who is with the West Hollywood Recovery Center. Thank you for being here, Christina. We're now going to open the forum to questions and answers from the community. West Hollywood resident and founder of We Hope Pickleball, Kelly Rogers will handle our question and answer session.
Thank you so much, Todd. Okay, so we're going to do a fun casual Q and A now. I would ask, just in the interest of time, to limit your questions to like around 30 seconds. I'm not going to be a huge stickler about it. But I just want to make sure that everyone can get their questions in. And I think we're actually going to pass the mic around. And then if you would rather write down your questions, that's totally fine. We have index cards and you can write them down and we'll come and collect them. Just a friendly tip that Assemblymember does represent us at the state level. So it's not really his role to weigh in on local issues. So this is a great opportunity, though, to bring awareness to something or ask a question about something that affects you at the state level. So with that being said, do, does anyone want to start? Does anyone have a question to kick us off? You can just raise your hand and we'll come to you. Yay, okay, I think over here was first. So we'll start in the white shirt.
It is a pleasure to meet you and to hear about all the legislative stuff that you have going. I love the legislative stuff that you have going. I would like to take, ask about environmentally, about kind of the white elephant in the room with the population. Is there like, has there ever been any talk about doing some soft messaging, you know, like PSAs or whatever, that people consider the number of children that they want to have in their family and get the message across that it's not sustainable, our population now, and it's only going to get worse? So it's kind of like the white elephant in the room. Does anyone ever talk about, like, I mean, like with China, it was like, oh my God, that was so horrible that they had the one child policy in place. But what they don't realize is the reasoning behind that was because of famine. And more children, you know, it would have been worse if people, you know, had more children and more people dying. So that's just kind of a hard question, but.
No, I mean, honestly, people don't raise that very often. And, but I think, you know, it's a, it's a complicated issue, right? And the one thing I'll say is that it also moves into sort of the whole area of reproductive health and reproductive choice, where I'm very proud that the governor and the Democratic legislature is fully funding and continuing to fund folks like Planned Parenthood and others, and reproductive health services here in the state of California, including reimbursement for abortions that are being conducted for women and people who become pregnant from other states. We're coming into California because we're doing that. But I think it's, you know, the ironic thing, it's generally framed in terms of folks on one side, I think, not wanting to provide services for people and families that are out there and then resisting, I think, people having the freedom and choice to sort of make choices over their own bodies. But it's an interesting issue. I, I, I think it's something you should raise with some of the environmental groups. But honestly, it's not something that is part of the dialogue right now. I think the dialogue now is really more on how do we continue to give people the ability to plan for their families and, and not actually have children that are unwanted in our, in our communities?
Thank you, and thank you for everything you're doing and to take on, you know, issues around rent control. Thank you so much and getting that forward. Really, really appreciate it. I just wanted to follow up on the work you're doing around AB 5. Again, thank you. That's not an easy lift, I know. But prior to you getting to the Assembly, you worked really hard on the Fair Act as well, which was about the curriculum to be taught in schools. And so maybe could you talk a little bit about that? And if you have any kind of update as to how that might be being implemented? If you think you might have to do additional legislation to move that forward? That would be great. Thank you.
We, we may very well, I think the Fair Act is actually working relatively well. As you know, because you were, I think, active at Trevor during the time that this was happening, Equality California and many of the groups in the space, which included Trevor and the LGBTQ Center and some others. So the Fair Education Act, just by background, is a bill that required that the California History and Social Studies curriculum fairly represent the contributions of members of the LGBTQ plus community. And so when it was adopted, I don't know, it's probably like seven years ago now, it might have been, it might be nine now. The, the Department of Public Instruction had to approve curriculum and textbooks. And we reviewed all of these textbooks to determine whether or not they complied with the spirit and the intent of the law. And one of the dynamics that's out there is that California is the state that actually is the biggest market for textbooks. But other states that are also large and together are probably equivalent are the states of Texas and Florida. And the, what school boards in California want and what our law requires is often in conflict with what's happening in these other states. And so you have a lot of textbook publishers that were basically nervous about actually complying with California law. And so we actually had to, like, rank these textbooks and object to them being part of the California curriculum. But that's a dynamic that's sort of out there. I think generally the Fair Act is, you know, doing well, but we're also facing new challenges. And that is, as you probably are reading, there's, there are school districts in Orange County and in Riverside County that are actually trying to ban books that actually have LGBTQ content in them from the library. One of my colleagues, who is a new member of the Assembly, Assemblymember Corey Jackson from the Riverside area, has authored a bill that basically protects school districts from these charges that, and these demands that we remove books with certain content. And it's not just LGBTQ content. I mean, they're objecting to, to content that actually portrays members of communities of color in positive ways. And they're objecting to what's called, there's another bill that requires what's called an ethnic studies curriculum to reflect the contributions of folks from, from the black community and other communities of color in our curriculum as well. And that has become a very controversial issue among right-wing folks. And so one of the things that I've been focused on is the fact with, with members of the, of a number of the caucuses, is how we bolster and make sure that the textbooks that are being offered under the ethnic studies curriculum actually fairly represent the intent of the, and the values that we have here in California and are not actually being guided by the opposite goals in Florida and Texas. The ethnic studies curriculum, in addition to that, I think, one of the other things that has happened is that there are some, some of the curriculum that's being out there actually includes some content that is actually relatively anti-Semitic. And it's actually being, the ethnic studies curriculum, I think, is being used in a way that was never intended to inject anti-Semitic content in some of these school districts. And so I think we also have to focus on what kind of oversight there is on all the curriculum in the states to make sure that, you know, the value of the ethnic studies curriculum is actually fairly represented and we actually are also protecting and making sure that anti-Semitic content isn't weaving into our school districts. Alec, I see Alec.
Thank you so much, Assemblymember for the town hall today. So I would like to just ask, what are some of your key priorities you're thinking about as, after the fall recess is over and we're back in session in January?
So I, my biggest priority is getting all my bills through. And so that will happen between the time I get back and the middle part of September. For next year, and I've been sort of starting to think about this and raise this, one of the things I think we have to all start grappling with is really the promise, but also the risks of increased automation and basically AI. If you think about it, you know, chat BT, GBT, and just the automation that we're seeing in automated vehicles, automation at our ports, it holds the promise of really a society in which people can have a life that is, you know, where we embrace much more leisure time and more time to spend with our families and our work time is concentrated and doing things that are, you know, really require intellectual capital and heart and spirit and human, humanity. But it also could be something where if we allow all the means of production to be owned by five or six billionaires and then fire everyone, where we could have many people living in poverty and, and really the benefits of that are not shared and are concentrated in the hands of a few people or a few corporations. And I think it's happening so fast that I don't feel like we, in California or at the federal level, especially with all the strife at the federal level, that anyone is like, it's just sort of happening and it's whizzing by and I think we need, really need to focus on it. I just do. And so that's one of the things that I'm planning on doing next year because I think it, what, what this, you know, the move to automation is such a, holds such promise, but it also holds such risk. And I can tell you, I don't have the answers. I really don't. I, but it's something that I think we, as a legislature, need to bring the best minds to. We need to start bringing, we need to start holding hearings. We need to start reaching out. We need to sort of start having the best thought leadership on this. And I don't have a lot of hope that the federal government is going to do anything. It's just, there's such deadlock in Washington. So I'm, I think it's going to be, just as it is for many other things. I mean, California is the beacon of hope for improving lives of people. And I think we're just going to have to take on that responsibility here in California and figure out how to grapple with this. It's probably something we can't do by ourselves here in California, but we need to start finding the templates and understanding what we need to do.
Thank you. I have a, a number of questions. I'll try to be very quick. One is that I know that Narcan is being distributed by the California Department of Health now. And I would like every public meeting such as this one to give us information on where we can get Narcan so that in this community, we might run into somebody who has overdosed and we might be able to help them. So that would be my first request. My second is that I think that there aren't as many people here as there should be because I think in my community, we've almost given up on public elected officials. I mean, we feel every time we go to a council meeting or object, we're told that the state is requiring that we destroy our neighborhoods and build upscale housing. And, you know, in my neighborhood, in my street, eight single-family houses are being destroyed. And the, more than 100 units of market rate pricing, market rate units are being constructed. And I would like to point out, since you're interested in the environment, that the environmental studies do not include the environment that's being destroyed in these buildings. They destroy backyards, they destroy front yards. They destroy a lot of land and that is not being measured or replaced. The third thing is when you talk about temporary employment, you've got to realize that most musicians and actors who are acting in small theater in Los Angeles, San Diego, are freelance workers. And they are now being labeled temporary workers, which is making their lives almost impossible. I mean, the freelance where they were able to take taxes off, they are now being pushed into a place where they cannot work at all. So they, I think you really have to take into account that although it sounds good to take care of temporary workers, that in the arts, that's what they do, is temporary work. I mean, so you did not cover the rise in state tuition at California State Universities and the other universities. My husband and I are both graduates of San Francisco State University and we paid almost nothing for our degrees. And now these children, these young people are being asked to come up with thousands and thousands of dollars. I would also, on the housing issue, I would like to point out that if you wanted to rent an apartment or in West Hollywood, you would have to have the $3,000 or more, $3,000 to $4,000 a month, plus $3,000 for the monthly, for the deposit, plus another $100 for your cat or dog, plus a cleaning deposit. And so when you subsidize housing, you may simply be subsidizing landlords who are gouging their tenants, as now is happening, where they're taking everything from them. I think, I wanted to, I'll end by thanking you deeply, deeply for being here and talking to us. We very much appreciate it and we wish we would see more public officials do so.
Thank you, that's, that's a very, very thoughtful comment. Let me sort of touch on a couple of them. I, with respect to the first comment about Narcan, totally agree with you. There are a number of bills that are working their way through the legislature. I'm a co-author of a couple of them that are really aimed at making sure that we are. providing Narcan really in all the places where we need it. You know, one of the things that has been, I think, misreported in a lot of the press is the fact the Republicans have done a good job at mischaracterizing what Democrats want to do to respond to the fentanyl crisis. And one of the things that the Republicans will do often is they will actually take existing law, they add fentanyl to a law that is about really sort of petty violations of things and actually drugs that are not, you know, anywhere near as harmful as fentanyl, which is, you know, a poison that is really ripping through our communities. And then they basically provide felony, felony penalties and huge amounts of imprisonment for that, which, you know, I support when it comes to the fentanyl, but I also can't vote for a bill that will result in a, you know, an LGBTQ kid who has a single ecstasy pill in his or her pocket, going to prison for the rest of their life. So they've been, done a good job at sort of doing bills like that. I have supported bills in terms on the criminal side that's really focusing on going after the people that are putting fentanyl in the stream of commerce and really lacing all these pills and putting them out on the streets and really increasing the penalty significantly there. I think we have to sort of treat this as a public health crisis that requires broad scale education. We need to be educating all our kids, that taking a Xanax pill that they think might be a prescription if they don't know where they got it. The folks are making pills that look like Xanax, that are actually laced with fentanyl and that could be, you know, something that is threatens their health and their lives. And we need to put Narcan everywhere and we need to start thinking about the impediments that small businesses are facing and being worried about administering Narcan. And we, and those are sort of tricky issues, right? Dealing with the liability issues that a small business may face by us telling them that they actually have to have Narcon in place, which I think they should. One of the bills that I'm co authoring is one that actually requires that insurance companies actually pay for the cost of Narcan so families can actually have it and have it covered by the insurance. So we reduce the cost for low income families to have it. But I agree, Narcan is something we really need to be focusing on and how we have it every place in our communities. With respect to tuition, totally agree with you. We need to sort of bring down the cost of tuition at our state universities and community colleges. I can tell you that even in a budget, a year where we had a tough budget, I think the funding for for the community colleges and University of California, Cal State, was maintained at a relatively healthy level. That doesn't mean we're going to bring bring down tuition, but it doesn't force us to move it, move those tuition costs up. My kid's mom, by the way, was on the Board of Regents and I know they did a tuition, they really looked at the tuition when she was on there. And while there were some tuition hikes, there were tuition reductions for for kids from lower incomes at this Cal State, at the University of California level. But I, I think that, you know, for at least for California residents, tuition should be free and we need to figure out how to make it close to that. It's probably not going to happen this year or next year where the budget is tight, but that's something that's a goal that I share with you. And then I think the last issue with respect to housing, you know, housing is a really complicated issue. I will tell you that I'm someone who I believe is, we need to do everything we can to build as much housing as we can and with the focus on affordable housing, but we also have to do it in a way where we're respecting the integrity of our neighborhoods and our residential neighborhoods and respecting the environment. And so there was a bill this last week where, you know, I was sort of the focus of a lot of lobbying about this because I'm one of the people that wants to do multiple things. And when you want to do multiple things, you, people on each side think that you're going to do something that that they don't like. And so you become the target of these things. So I've learned how being someone who has multiple goals, what that results in when you're in the member of the Assembly. But I do think that, you know, I think we can build the housing that we need and focus on affordable housing and at the same time, respect residential communities. I actually think that West Hollywood has done a relatively good job compared to some other areas of doing that. I know it hasn't been perfect and there's probably, you know, some projects that you may not, may not support, but overall, I think it's doing a job, sort of putting housing really on the commercial corridors and really trying to keep the integrity of of neighborhoods like West Hollywood, West and others sort of intact without actually having significant intrusions in those neighborhoods. I think those are the issues you covered, so thank you.
It looks like Robert's coming around for another question.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
So we're going to move on to the next question.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And she was basically, the point she was making, and then I'll let go to, 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 she, the point she was making is there's just not enough affordable housing. She was having trouble obtaining it when she applied and I agree with that. We need to do as much as we can to increase affordability. I was actually just at Affordable Housing Projects Two today that were up in, here in West Hollywood and I think are really good models for what we sort of need to be doing, but thank you.
Great. So Lauren Meister, Council Member, and sort of to add on to that, I think, I think one of the issues that that elected officials like myself have seen is the state over the last 10 years or so has, has been taking away local control. And West Hollywood has really been a leader in providing affordable housing on its own by having an inclusionary housing ordinance way before anyone else thought about it. So I guess my, my question or my hope is that maybe for those cities who are, are good actors, who are providing affordable housing by being creative and by doing it at a pace that that makes sense for their city, that maybe the state can look at housing policy a little differently and not as a one size fits all policy. So I'm hoping, because you're new and you're fresh, that you can go in there and and see what you can do to help cities like ours by giving us carrots instead of sticks to provide affordable housing. The other thing is, and I, I think I've been talking about this since Mike Fuhrer was an Assembly Member, is water. And earlier I spoke about competing interests in Sacramento and it seems to me that, you know, as much as we can say build, 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 we have a limited amount of water. And although we had a lot of rain this year, California really was not prepared. We were not very resilient. So is that something that you'll be looking at in the future, how we can be more of a resilient state, especially when it comes to a limited resource like water and dealing with competing interests to make sure we don't forget about the fact that, that people, you know, their water bills are going up because the water companies say that they need to raise, raise money, raise, you know, their rates because of fixed costs and limited amounts of water and yet, and yet we say, you know, we can, we can provide water for all of these projects.
I mean, water is a tough, you know, California was, you know, the history of California, a lot of people would argue is about the competing demands for water, not only the ag industry, but here in Southern California and what we had to do to import it. And it continues to be. And, you know, it raises issues about how much water we import from Northern California and what that might be doing to habitats up there. But the fact that we actually need water down here. And so, you know, I'm someone that believes that we should be looking at reuse and reclamation first and conservation first and then, then looking at additional supply. But we do need additional supply as well and we need to be planning long term, especially as the Colorado River allocations are coming down. I don't have the answers to that. I'll just admit, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm an environmental lawyer, but I was not someone who specialized in water, but I know it's something that I'm going to have to get up to speed on because we're going to have some tough decisions as a state as we move forward in the next couple of years.
Okay, right here, Robert.
Yes, hi Zach.
It's very exciting to have our own Assembly Member appointed caucus chair, hoping you can maybe tell us a little bit about that new role and what it entails.
So the new speaker is, is a man by the name of Robert Rivas, who I just have, I've known for a long time, actually. His brother was on the Board of Equality California, which is the LGBTQ plus civil rights group that I ran for a number of years. And he was on the board that hired me. So I've known, I've known Rob since the early days, right after, I think, 2014, when I was hired. So I've known him for a long time. But he's a really, I find a really inspiring person when, especially when you look at sort of what he's done in his life and really just sort of the political courage that he has had and his story, which was that he and his brother grew up with their single mom in farm worker housing in Northern California. And his grandfather was someone who was part of the original United Farm Workers Movement and worked together with Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta, the two civil rights icons that Dolores, I know was on the Equality California Board, who I admire so much. But they were, they were basically the godchildren of Dolores Huerta and Cesar Chavez and, you know, came from nothing, living in farm worker housing. And of course, he goes from that and goes to school, becomes a school administrator, is elected to the Board of Supervisors in San Benito County and becomes, makes his name by being really courageous on opposing fracking because it was polluting groundwater in his rural farm community. And so that's how he ended up getting elected to Congress. So I, we had a, we had to make some decisions about who our next leader was going to be. I was someone who was supporting Speaker Rivas and had been close to him throughout my first, well, before I got here, but through the first six months and I'm really proud that he appointed me to one of the three leadership roles, the top leadership roles, the two others being the Majority Leader, the Speaker Pro Tem and then the Democratic Caucus Chair. The Democratic Caucus Chair responsibilities, there's sort of two sides of it. One side I can't talk about because this is an official thing, but there's a political side in helping him achieve some political objectives. On the official side, I actually chair the Democratic Caucus, which is all the Democrats in the Assembly, and the goal is really to try to achieve consensus and strategy on the things that we are going to move forward as a, as a body. So it's a really important position and one that as part of that, is part of the Speaker's key leadership group. His group will be those three people that I talked about and then probably a couple chairs of some of the key committees. So that will be his key leadership team that will meet once a week. And, and I'm just really proud that I'm part of it because it gives me the ability to represent this district well and have some input in terms of really sort of the strategy that the overall Assembly will do and have more of an impact on, you know, on the things that I was elected to do, which is to try to make things better for the people of the state of California and the 51st District in particular. Yes. Yep. I think, I mean, I think the thing that resonates with me is the points that Council Member Meister was making about one size not fitting all. I do think that when you, when you talk to housing advocates, they can show you many, many examples of times when, when house, good housing projects that are along transit that don't impact the environment and don't impact residential communities are stopped for reasons that aren't good. And then on the other side, you can see a lot of cases where it would have been much better if we had had a local government sort of protecting the interest of a particular neighborhood or particular community. And so I'll tell you, for me, right, you're never going to find me on one side of that debate or the other completely. I will always sort of be a tweener because I think both perspectives have validity and we're going to have to make hard choices about how we both move housing forward and at the same time, protect the values that you care about here in West Hollywood. And so I will always listen to you and I will make the best choices that I can and the best decisions, but I think both, you know, both sides have some validity, so.
Good evening. I want to thank you for speaking and it's good to see somebody come to the, come here. You know, we always see these people on TV, other town halls across the country. So it's nice to see somebody come here. What is your stand on reparations for descendants, the black American descendants? And just like, where would the money come from? And would be housing, would it be loans, would it be business? But, and yeah, what's your stand on that?
So, you know, I think the issue of reparations is one that is sort of, I think, very charged just because, you know, it's, it's sort of like the issue of, do you support defunding the police, right? Defunding the police means different things to different people. Reparations means different things to different people. I will say that I believe that we have institutional racism that affects, that affects members of the black community, that some of what happened during slavery has resulted in, in members of the black community really not having had a fair chance in life and being on an equal playing field and that it's an appropriate thing for us as a government and as a society collectively to look at what we can do to level the playing field. And so to the extent reparations is that and a strategy to do that, I would say that I support those goals. And so I think, I just think that's something, and I, and that I think is the direction that the state of California and the Assembly and the legislature will go because I think there's an issue that we have to, you know, that we have to, that we have to deal with. And, and it's a, it's a matter of social justice and social equity and social, and really improving a lot of folks that actually, you know, faced a lot of harm based upon sort of a history of racism in our country.
Do we have any other questions? And please remember to speak into the mic as well. I thought I saw some more hands. Don't be shy. No? Okay.
Okay, well, I will, I'm going to stick around a little bit. So if you want to ask me questions individually, happy to be around for another, you know, 15 minutes, 30 minutes. And so grab me, thank you for coming out. Thank you for caring enough about your community to come to something like this in the middle of a week, in the middle of the summer. You know, I, let me just actually bring my staff up because I want you to see who works for me. Robert, Hannah, Sherwin, just come on up and introduce yourselves so that folks know who you are and tell a little bit about what you do for, for our constituents.
Hi everybody. I'm Robert Oliver. I'm the Assembly Member's District Director. I have the pleasure of running our district operations. That's everything from events like this, working with a fantastic team to, to handle cases, cases that come into our office, whether it's casework with, you know, if you've got an issue with the DMV, you've got an issue with EDD, your unemployment is delayed, we're here to help with that. Same at the county level, if you have a county issue, city level, we're here with, to help with state issues. And I'll turn it over to our talented team.
Hi everyone, I'm Hannah Winker. I'm one of the Assembly Members' Field Representatives. I second everything that Robert just said. Just know that we are always, always here. We're just a phone call away or an office visit away. And I have plenty of business cards that I can hand out so you can reach out with any questions, concerns you might have and this is.
Hello everyone, my name is Sherwin Schmoyle. I am Assembly Member's of Burzouf, Field Representative. I third everything Robert said. And I just want to let everyone know that it's incredible how carefully and how seriously the Assembly Member takes all the comments that comes into his office. I like to say we're the eyes and ears of the district. I like to say we're the eyes and ears of the district, and he listens to what we relay. So if there's something you feel really important about, it's really, it's critical, you reach out to us, because the Assembly Member takes your, your views and your comments very seriously, and they're very important to him.
We have one more exciting announcement, so, do you want to make the announcement? So, the Assembly Member's District Office has moved, we inherited an office that was by the Santa Monica Airport, as of last week, we are now one and a half blocks from the city of West Hollywood at Sunset and Stanley, so very close by, we're neighbors now.
So with that, I want to thank you, I want to thank Kelly and Todd and Eric for spending their evening with us, and it's really an honor to represent you, and please, please reach out whenever, if we can help you, and if you have, if you have views about the bills that I have to vote on, I, I do, I got to tell you, I probably had to vote on 1,000 bills in the first half of the legislative session. In the, the tools that they give us in the legislature, you know, we get a draft of the bill, we get a bill analysis, we get copies of every letter that is written in, for and against, and then my staff has a section where they describe every call I've gotten about the bill, so I can actually read all of those, so just know I do pay attention to all of that, and sometimes I've actually called folks to, if I didn't understand the concern that they had, to make sure that I do that. So again, your views are always welcome, and I encourage you to sort of stay in touch, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Also, I would like to thank our Assembly Member, Rick Zibber, for being here with us this evening and coming to the city of West Hollywood, thank you very much.